Okay, we're going to begin the meeting tonight. City of Lawrence Common Council Meeting, January 17, 2018. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I pray that as we go through this meeting that you will lead us, guide us, and direct us that we make sound decisions for our city. Please keep the constituents and the public safety officers of our city safe. And we just ask that you continue to be the blessing that you've always been. In your blessed name we pray, amen. It looks like we have a quorum here. Next on the agenda is comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions.
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Jones.
I received a phone call about 10 days ago about a concerned citizen and a complaint about one of our officers, so I was wondering if I could address that.
Sure.
Let me step down here.
I'll sit you at this way so we can face this way.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Did you say complaint or compliment?
It's actually a complaint at this moment.
Okay, great.
I'll figure it out later.
Great.
As I was stating, we had a complaint on an officer when I got this original phone call, and the complaint was, is there's too many Johns at this police department. And the lady went on to tell me about one of our officers that saved a dog's life. And all she knew was his name was John. So for the next 30 minutes, I sat on the phone with one of our great dispatchers, I cannot remember her name, and through process of elimination, we finally figured out which John it was. So in saying that, I was given a letter by Ms. Susan Jagger, and I didn't know if she wanted to read that or did she want me to read that.
You can read it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave it now for, as Police Officer John, we'll leave it as at for now. Counselor Jones, I'm writing to share with you a story of one of our public servants going above and beyond to save the life of a family beloved pet. On or about January 6, a family dog, Duke, went missing. The dog was spotted by a person riding in the trail at Lawrence near Lee Road and 63rd Street. The individual called in and reported a dog that appeared to have been attacked by a coyote, which I think we later found out that it may have been hit by a car. Officer Hayes responded to the call, walked a great distance, maybe up to a mile, to a trail to locate Duke. He then picked up this 90-pound injured dog. Take it, these uniforms are not cheap. So that shows what kind of officer this is, to pick up an injured dog and carry him through the woods. This Officer John sat with the dog in his vehicle, he put this injured dog in his vehicle, until the owners were called and met. Officer John also stayed there until he was picked up, which the dog's name was Duke. Thanks to the cyclist and Officer Hayes, John Hayes, efforts Duke was rescued, was treated, and did survive the attack. And at this time, if I could have the owner, Summer, and the dog, Duke, come forward. And whoever else wanted to come forward.
Hi, I'm Summer McCully, and this is my daughter, Kaitlin Shelley. We have three Goldens, actually. We have the mom and father of this one also. So when we had our litter, my daughter could not let go of this puppy. From day one, it's been her little baby. It sleeps in her bed. He has his own pillow. And I don't know what I would have done if he did not make it back home. We are so grateful and thankful for Officer John. And I don't think we would ever be able to repay you for bringing our dog home to us. And I know, this one will never be able to repay you. So we would like to give you a certificate of appreciation.
And for the record, the real John is Officer John Hayes. And I'd just like to say, Officer Hayes, as a council member, we appreciate you for going over beyond the call of duty and doing what you do as an officer every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
One thing I forgot, and I apologize. Detective Hinshaw, if you could stand for a second. She also came to the aid, and she was able to locate the owner and help Officer Hayes, so we appreciate you also, Detective. A good detective.
Any other counselor members for special recognitions or resolutions?
I have no time to look through.
Yes, Counselor Giles.
No problem. I'll let you take.
I just want to get a real quick picture of the dog. Just turn around and go, "I'm sorry." Well, the bar's in the way, let me get over here.
Yeah, well.
The bar's in the way.
I'll look at it. Yeah.
I think Duke just won the popularity contest. Thank you.
We can share mine, it's fine.
Aw.
That's okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And moving on with the agenda, comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions, are there any more? Counselor Giles.
I just wanted to show my appreciation to the DPW, I think in Lawrence Utilities, the snow removal that has been done. I think it's a real privilege that we have here in Lawrence to get our neighborhood streets and stuff as clean as we do. And it's just really heightened when you have to go ride back neighborhood streets in Indianapolis, and you kind of realize, okay, this is a real advantage of living in Lawrence. So I saw those guys out there bright and early getting it done, and I really appreciate it. I never feel like I'm going to have a hard time getting out on the road to get to work, so just wanted to give those guys a little shout out.
Any other counselor?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Wells.
I am a member, I guess somewhat, a member of an unofficial group of animal lovers, and I would like to have spoke to Officer Hayes before he got out of here, but Chief Hoffman, if I could get possibly a contact information, or maybe you could have he and I getting contacted, I know this group would really love to give him a special thanks, if he would be, you know, willing to come and let that happen. Yeah, because he's definitely, he's definitely an asset to this city, and I couldn't be more proud of what he did, because that was way beyond the call of duty. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other counselor? No? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion? Make the motion. Motion by Counselor Freeman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wheeler. All in favor by a show of hands? I think it passes unanimously. Pay the bills. Reports of committees, we only have Committee of the Whole and Finance reports. So I'll make the report for Committee of the Whole, and I would say that we had a discussion between the council and the administration, questions that we had regarding Resolution Number 10 regarding the police station. We got as many questions answered as we could. There's still some open questions left, so I'm going to be looking at scheduling a follow-on meeting, will probably be on January 3 at 6:30, I'm sorry, January 30 at 6:30. So that is a Tuesday evening, and we do intend, Chief, to have questions prepared ahead of time and sent that out to you and the administration no later than about the 24th or 23rd of January, okay? Finance.
On the Finance Committee, we had two items that we discussed and visited. One was Proposal Number 24, which is amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence and Indiana with respect to disability and retiree stipend benefits. That proposal did not, was, it was recommended to not pass from the committee to full council. Also, two, on Proposal Number 25, amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence and Indiana with respect to the city's credit card policy. That was a motion to approve or recommend the policy to full council. Excuse me, those were the two items that were discussed.
Madam President, it was amended, so it was a motion to approve the amended version.
The amended version, yes, I'm sorry, yes, of the credit card.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Chevlat and Counselor Giles. Okay, unfinished business. Resolution Number 10, 2017, authorizing the City of Lawrence to proceed with the Lawrence Police Station and take all actions required by law, that will remain in committee, committee as a whole. Proposal Number 24, 2017, amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana with respect to disability retiree stipend benefits.
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Wheeler.
If it's appropriate at this time, I would like to withdraw my proposal until further notice, so we can apply all the changes and the different edits that were given to us at the Finance Meeting.
Okay, there's been a motion to withdraw Proposal Number 24, 2017, is there a second?
I'll second.
Why does it need to be a second? Once the sponsor withdraws it.
Okay, so sponsor withdrawn, so we don't require a second, so it's withdrawn. All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Moving on, Proposal Number 25, 2017, amending the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana with respect to the city's credit card policy, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Counselor Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Freeman. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Wells.
I'm going to air, I guess, the same concern as I aired in the Finance Committee. My issue with this, and I guess it was my questioning this credit card expenditure back, I guess it was in December, which apparently brought this proposal to light, was there were some expenditures that, wasn't so much expenditures, was the amount that brought a red flag to me. And I totally understand, you know, the way things are nowadays where, you know, everything's paid by with a credit card, per se, but I still am concerned about, you know, we're raising this to $15,000, basically doubling the limit as to where it is now. You know, when we do these claims or look at these claims and approve them, there's claims in there just for a few dollars, and we approve them. So I'm not sure why this credit card claim, or why these expenditures on the credit card should be an exception, that we don't approve the expenditures on them. And the answer I got in Finance is, well, you know, we can request the, you know, the copies of the bills. I'm still waiting on the one for December. You know, the one, one of the ones that drawed attention to me at the time was like for a Christmas tree. And I did get, the controller did give me some from like October back, and I just think there's some things in there that the taxpayers shouldn't be saddled with, like Christmas trees and pizzas and such. But, so, I just am concerned that by passing this Proposal 25, you know, we're going to have a $15,000 limit of unknowns that, of expenditures that's going to, you know, go right past us, and we're not going to know what they are without a great deal of effort trying to find out. Like I said, I requested from this very seat the expenditures for December, and I never, I've still haven't yet to ever got them. So anyway, that's what my point is, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
I guess, I would just want to add for the record, Madam Chair, if I may, that just for the people, the reason that the expenditure was proposed to go up to the $15,000 is that is what the limit is on the card, and so that's what the city had asked for them to be, if needed, they would have the ability to use the card up to the limit of what the card is used for, you know, that they have the balance credit limit to use in case it was needed. So that was one of the things that was the reason why the number doubled. I don't know if when old ordinance was created, I don't know if the, if the limit was 7,500 then, and now it's 15, I'm not sure of that, but, you know, that's the thought process of, and that's just for the record, so people at home could understand what, who may not have seen our Finance Meeting.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay, there's a motion by Counselor Parker, second by Counselor Freeman, all in favor by a show of hands. Okay, Proposal Number 25, it looks like it's nine to one. It passes. That's Counselor Wells.
Eight to one, and it's a no or abstain?
Opposed.
Counselor Wells. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so that's for the amended, do we have to make a motion to accept the amended version and then adopt?
We do. Okay, we need, there was an amendment on that proposal, so we need a motion to accept the amended.
Make a motion to accept the amended version.
Motion by Counselor Chevlat, second by Counselor Wheeler. All in favor by a show of hands? Opposed?
I'll still be a no.
All right, so nine.
Okay.
And Counsel Wells opposed. Or eight, and Counsel Wells opposed.
I just happened to think of that, so.
Now technically, Madam President, you should vote to approve the amended version, because now you just accepted it back.
Accepted, now you have to approve.
And we have to approve the amendment, I'm sorry.
Okay, so a motion to approve Proposal Number 25, the amended version of Proposal Number 25.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Wheeler.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Freeman. All in favor by a show of hands? Opposed?
I thought about it, but I think I'll still say no.
So the first motion didn't happen then.
That was practice, Kathy. Practicing.
Got to keep you on your toes.
Thank you. New business, consideration of council appointments to the Redevelopment Commission.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Bruce Kimmery, please.
Okay.
How many appointments is there for this?
Two.
Two?
Two, okay. So I'm going to write these down.
So we have Bruce Kimmery.
Is that with a K? K-I-M.
Which one's this for? We have several. Oh, it's.
It's at the top, Redevelopment Commission.
Okay, okay. How do you spell his last name?
I'd like to make a motion that, for Justice Sullivan.
Mm-hmm. Madam, did you say Justin?
Justice.
Justice.
Frank. Frank Sullivan.
Okay.
Madam President.
Sort of proper with titles, sorry. Yes, Counselor Wheeler.
Could I also put up for nomination a Curtis Bigsby? Thank you. He's also one of our current appointees.
Not for redevelopment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm thinking of reuse.
Sorry, my brain is back on that first moment.
Are you withdrawing?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
My brain's still back on practice mode.
Curtis is like, "Don't give me, don't give me any more work." Okay, so we have Bruce Kimmery and Frank Sullivan. Anyone else? Okay. Nominations are closed.
It's 2018.
2018, that's a one-year appointment.
Can you repeat the nominees again for me, please?
Bruce Kimmery and Frank Sullivan.
I put 17 the first time, so I said 18.
There is no practice once we turn these in.
Did I put 18 on there or 17?
Yes, you did, I watched.
Oh, okay. I do it too.
Sharon, did you just vote for one?
Uh-huh.
Tyrell.
Oh, yeah.
Pardon me, it's like, you don't want to. Okay. There were 18 votes cast, nine votes for Frank Sullivan, and eight votes for Bruce Kimmery, so they're both reappointed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of council appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Are there any nominations?
Hold on a second, me.
Madam.
Hold on one second.
Get Kathy get her sheets out here.
If you wouldn't mind, okay, thank you. Get the ballots going here.
It's okay.
We have three appointments, regular appointments.
I'm a mom.
Madam President.
I'm a mom, I'm fine.
I would like to nominate Art Dusinski. Where's my, oh, there it is.
Counselor Wells, can you repeat the last name?
Dusinski, it's spelled D-U-S-Z-Y-N-S-K-I.
Any other nominations?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Mark Remrick.
For BZI?
For BZI.
Yes.
Can you, how do you spell his last name?
R-U-M-R-E-I-C-H.
R-U-M?
R-E-I-C-H.
I know I spelled R to my mom.
He's the one that's on the stormwater currently.
So are we doing three right now, and then the alternate in the next vote?
That's correct.
Okay. Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
I'd like to nominate Mike Payton, P-A-Y-T-O-N.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
Can I have some clarification? So are we just voting for one member, or there's three appointments?
There's three appointments and an alternate.
Okay, great.
So we've got three nominations so far, are there any more?
And the alternate will be on a separate ballot.
Okay, nominations are closed for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
We have Art Dusinski, Mark Remrick, and Mike Payton.
I don't know the, Mark what?
Payton.
Mark Payton?
Mike.
Mike, sorry.
Mike Payton. What's the, Art Dusinski, what's the other name?
Mark Remrick.
Mark Remrick.
Remrick.
Remrick. Remrick. All right, hook, don't phonics those.
I lost track, where was that?
Thank you.
Okay, there were 27 votes cast, nine for Art Dusinski, nine for Mark Remrick, and nine for Mike Payton.
Thank you. Now we will be voting on the alternate for the BZI, so the alternate.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, Counsel Wheeler.
May I please nominate Tara Milton?
Any other nominations?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Brett Addington.
What was the name, please?
Brett Addington, A-D-D-I-N-G-T-O-N.
Madam President, if I could just clarify something, on the alternate, just, a lot of people don't understand, the alternate is to be here at every BZI meeting, no matter what. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed.
He is the new appointment to the alternate for BZI.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Addington. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Resolution Number 1, 2018.
Stormwater.
Oh, I'm sorry, skipped right over that appointment. We're going to cast one more vote, and that's going to be for consideration of council appointment to the Marion County Stormwater District Technical Advisory Committee. Are there any nominations?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Paul Oler, and that's O-L-E-R.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Linda Treat.
Okay, any more nominations? Okay, any more nominations?
What's the, what's the people's names again?
Oh, so it's Paul Oler, O-L-E-R. And Linda Treat. Nominations are closed.
Can make that clear without an announcement.
Elizabeth?
My vote's intentional.
There were eight votes cast, five for Paul Oler, and three for Linda Treat. Paul is the appointment. If you guys can get me the contact information, whoever nominated them, I'll need to send an appointment letter, so I don't have Paul's...
Madam President, so someone didn't vote on that one, then, I guess?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to Resolution Number One, 2018. Clerk will read by title.
Resolution Number One, 2018, introduced by Counselor Chavis, a resolution of the common counsel of the City of Lawrence, Indiana concerning retention of Bose McKinnon Evans LLP as legal counsel.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Wheeler, second by Counselor Giles. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor by a show of hands to retain Bose McKinnon Evans? Unanimous. Thank you. Ordinance Number One, 2018, adopting and enacting...
Oh, sorry, I'm just doing your job. I'm so anxious.
Go right ahead, Kathy. Read by title.
Proposal Number One, 2018, introduced by Counselor Chavis, a proposal for an ordinance adopting and enacting an 11th supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lawrence, Indiana.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam President, can I make a motion to suspend the rules and vote on this this evening?
Okay, there's been a motion made to suspend the rules on ordinance Number One, 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion made by Counselor Wheeler, second by Counselor Chevlat. All in favor to suspend the rules?
We have discussion on it.
Any discussion?
I'm not sure, I'm not, just not familiar with it, because I wasn't, I wasn't ready for you to be doing this tonight.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let Council Attorney explain, Ordinance Number One, 2018.
This is for the code supplement that Walter puts together every year. It basically is all of the ordinances and resolutions passed between January of 2017 and November 22nd of 2017. So American Publishing, which is the publishing company for your paper and your online Lawrence City Code, goes through all of those documents, provides a supplement just listing all the changes to the code to Kathy. Kathy gives it to me. I go through it with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that everything you did in that period of time last year is now reflected in that supplement. I did find a couple of small errors and worked back and forth with the publishing company to make sure that they're correct, so I'm confident that it reflects all of your work of last year. So it really is just an administrative task, Counselor Wells, so that our code is updated appropriately thus. I think going ahead and not sending it to committee and taking the longer time to get that done makes a lot of sense, but of course, that is your call.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so it was motion by Counselor Wheeler, second by Counselor Chevlat. All in favor by a show of hands for ordinance Number One, 2018?
We're just suspending...
To, oh, it's a motion to suspend the rules, sorry, sorry. There's been a motion made by Counselor Wheeler to suspend the rules, and second by Counselor Chevlat. All in favor to suspend the rules? Okay, that was unanimous? Okay, now, so is there a motion on the floor, ordinance Number One, 2018?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance at Number One, 2018.
Okay, motion by Counselor Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Any discussion? Being none? All in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous. Great. Comments of the administration. So Mayor and the Controller had a previous engagement and weren't able to make it to the meeting tonight. Is there anyone else in the administration that has comments? I only see two of you here. No comments? Okay, great. Adjournment?
I'll call for adjournment.